Order, and you might be wondering why I am calling this to order. This is our organizational meeting that happens annually, so those folks that are here with us tonight and viewing online, the board will be conducting their organizational meeting tonight, and the superintendent typically starts this till we get our first officer appointed. So I'll call this meeting to order. And our first order of business actually is swearing in our newest board member. So we're going to do that right now. I'm going to turn it over to Valerie Goss, Board Secretary, and she'll handle the formalities.
Awarding parts of your journey. Would new board member Marika Hawzuruk please rise? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and the Constitution of the State of Michigan
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office
of member of the Board of Education of Madawan Consolidated School
as member of the Board of Education of Madawan Consolidated School
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So for those of you that may not see what's happening now, we've just got some signatures happening on some paperwork with our newly appointed board member, and we'll move on with the agenda here in just a moment. All right, welcome, Marika. So moving on to the election of officers, at this time I would entertain a motion for the Office of President. Do we have any motions for the election of the Office of President?
I'd like to move that Ted Roethlisberger be instituted as President of the school board.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second for Mr. Roethlisberger as President?
Second.
Is that Sherry? Okay. We have a motion on the floor for President, any discussion? And this is actually the only officer position that requires a roll call vote, so if there's no discussion, further questions, I don't see any. Valerie, if you could read the roll, and we'll take a vote on this.
Marika? Yeah. Vicky?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Yes.
So the motion carries 7-0 by roll call, and I'll hand the gavel over to the President to continue.
Thank you, everybody, for trusting me with this position. I appreciate it, and I'll do the best of my ability to keep these things moving, keep us moving forward and keep us on the same page, so I appreciate it very much. At this time, we need to do a, entertain nominations for the Office of Vice President, and I'll start that. I'd like to nominate Dr. Maureen Ford as Vice President for the school board. Do I have a second?
Second.
My Vicky. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we will entertain nominations for the Office of Secretary. Do I have any nominations for Secretary?
I'd like to make a motion for Sherry McGrath to serve as Secretary of the school board.
Thank you, Mark. I'll second that. Any other, any discussion? Bruce, you need a pen, it works. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sherry will be our secretary? Sorry, Bruce. I'm going to get a Thor hammer. And now I'll entertain nominations for the Office of Treasurer. Do I have any motions for Treasurer?
I move to have Mark Nossinger hold the Office of Treasurer.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All right, so we'll go to a vote. All those in favor of Dr. Mark Nossinger for Treasurer for our school board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Right here. All right. Now we need to move into the setting of our, of our regular meeting dates. Typically, we've, for the last few years, we've done board meetings Monday nights at 6:30. That's worked for a while. That continues to work for people. Probably moved to do that, but if somebody's got a better idea or a different idea, now's the time for us to think about that.
The only change I see is the normal June change.
Okay. Yeah, that-
Actually, this has a change for July and August, too, right? Which I kind of like, the morning meetings like we did last summer, but that wasn't traditionally always what we did, so it was-
Well, June's always the end of the month.
Yes.
Yes, the date in June changes, right? But the time changed only, so it's the first, it's the same Monday, but just in the morning instead of the evening in July and August.
So we do have that presented. That was presented in your packet. So it's typically a 6:30 meeting on the second Monday of every month, with the exception of June, and the reason why June is later is because of budget. We need to vote on budget, and we want to give Ms. Stermer and her group enough time to do all that hard work. And if we do it the second week of June, sometimes that's darn near impossible, so I'd like to move that to the end of June. And then those Monday, those morning meetings in the summer, we did those last year. Seemed to work out well for, to try to keep people's summer evenings free if we could. If that works for everybody, I guess, get a motion for this calendar. And if we need to, we can always adjust dates as needed.
I move to pass this calendar. I mean, unless there's discussion, if it doesn't work for someone, you can hold off. But hearing none, I would move to pass this calendar.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now we can, discussion, too. Does it work for most everybody? Most? Okay.
I don't have my schedule yet, so I don't know.
Right. All right, so I guess, your discussion is just about over. We'll move to, we'll vote on this. All those in favor of the meeting dates as scheduled or as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None? And next will be the designation of school depositories. So there's some information in your packet in regards to that, I believe. Typically, we grant the CFO, which is Pam Stermer, the authority to utilize Fifth Third, Chase Bank, Chemical Bank, Consumers Credit Union, Huntington Bank, the Michigan Class Investment Pool, and PFM Financial as specified. And then she can execute and require any documentation or resolutions related to this, that financial activity. So I'd like to make that motion.
That's the same without changes, right?
That's correct, there weren't any changes for right now.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll go into the designation of our school legal counsel. Pam, do you have, sorry. You were supposed to do the other one earlier, and I stepped on your toes, so-
You're okay, that's fine.
Yeah, what school legal counsel would you like to see us?
So Trune Law is our main attorney that we use. They're school law specialists. So we use them for the vast majority of issues that we may have. And Varnum is, we use on occasion as a, they're kind of specialists with human resource type issues. So we might utilize them in different ways as well, so just those two for legal.
Okay. So I'll move to approve the firm of Varnum and Trune as the district's legal counsel for the 2022 calendar year?
Second.
Any discussion?
Pam, I know we've used Trune quite a bit with all the financial things and whatnot, but have we used Varnum recently for anything?
We have not. They were actually in contact with me regarding some 403B issues that, but we had already had those updated because we're part of the consortium with the state, and so we didn't really need them. I don't mind keeping them on, just as a resource, but we really have not been using them too much in the last year or two.
Do we pay them a retainer fee to stay on, or, okay?
No, nope.
That's great, then.
Yeah, it's just as needed.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the recommended legal counsel, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Now we'll talk about our designation for our auditor, our yearly auditor. Pam?
So I would recommend Yo and Yo again as our auditor. They do a great job for us. They know our district. We have a great working relationship with them, so, and they're, you know, price-wise, they're well within the realm of what auditors' rates are these days, so I'd like to continue using them.
I'd make a motion, we continue to use Yo and Yo as our auditor.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I don't know how many years exactly, but I could guess 10 to 15 years, maybe, I think. Yeah, they're very knowledgeable in school business as well, so that's one of their niches.
All right, I'd like to, a vote on the auditor as recommended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none? That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to the appointment of standing committees. You can see in our, in your packet. It may be a little old, standing committees, it didn't change much last year. Scott's name's on there a little bit. What I'd like to do is to, um, I don't know. So what I'd like to do is table this till February. If you could take a look at that list, see what committees you're on, if you'd like to continue being on those committees. Marika, what committees you might be responsible for? I mean, typically-
Scott was only on two.
Yeah, he was on, yeah, the executive committee, but I was on a few, so I'll take my name off of a few and put them away where Scott's are, or leave it on one, et cetera. So I'll get a draft out. I'll get a draft out, but if you could, you know, let me know what you're interested in, and then we can do a working document through that. Typically, the one that you gets utilized the most is probably the policy committee, where we go through policies quite a bit with the superintendent, and then that meeting, that committee brings their recommendations to the board as far as policies go. Marika, for you, that usually is, we subscribe to, I forget, it was Neola, is it still, now it's something else, or?
It's still Neola.
It's still Neola.
At this present time, yes.
At this present time. So we, they give us recommended policies and policy adjustments. They keep up to, keep up to date on laws and trends and those types of things, and they present those to us for us to look at and vote on. Typically, it's, recently, it's been just language changes and those types of things, nothing major, but the policy committee goes through that and combs it over and makes sure that we, with the guidance of the superintendent, that we're staying on the correct path there. So if everybody's okay with it, I think we'll table that till February. An actual, and I don't think this one doesn't even really need a vote, does it?
It does not.
No. So we'll just, we'll just talk through it in February. We'll just nail it down as being the, what the committees are moving forward. So going on from there, the next one is the appointment of the election administrator. So typically, Pam, do you talk through this one, or do I have to? Election one? I can do it, okay. So the election administrator acts on behalf of the board to ensure that all activities related to elections are completed throughout the year. Typically, our election, our election administrator is the superintendent. The superintendent is dialed into those types of things, so I think that's, we've had it in the past, and I'll probably keep it there going forward. So if I could get, so I'd like to, I'd like to move to appoint Randy Fleaner as the election administrator for the 2022 calendar year.
Support.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Passes. And then we've got the appointment of the electronic transfer officer. I know this one's you, Pam.
It is. So it's board policy to appoint someone called electronic transfer officer, and that's basically in charge of and approving electronic transactions of any type, which, you know, in this day and age, we have a lot of. So definitely a need for that. So that's, that's just me in the office doing, you know, in charge of that, so overseeing what goes on electronically with transfers and so on. So that's what you have to approve.
I'll move to appoint Pam Stermer to be our electronic transferring, transfers officer for 2022.
I second that.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of Pam Stermer being our electronic transfer officer, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And the next, Pam's going to walk us through the approval of district credit card, purchase and debit card users?
Right, so this is just another item that you need to approve for the year. We do use the purchase cards in the district, which is basically a credit card. We're in a program with MS, through MSBO, with BMO Harris is the bank right now that we use for these cards. And they're, you know, basically used for ease. It's a great way to, a little bit easier way to be able to purchase items, and we use them in our office to pay invoices because it is part of a rewards, like a cash back reward program. There's many districts in the state that use that program, and so they do rewards based on not just our own spend, but a combined spend statewide, and then send, you know, cash back to districts. So we all like to do that. So we have, in the last year or so, kind of pared down the list a little bit, just being a little bit more intentional on how we're assigning cards and who has the use of them, and then just kind of paying attention to limits, too. You know, you don't throw huge limits out there for everybody. They get what's appropriate for their needs. So we just kind of give a list, so you guys, so you have an idea of what areas in the district would have a card.
Yeah. So in our packet, there's a list of those positions, position titles. I'd like to move to approve those debit purchase card user, authorized users as presented. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Vicky. Any discussion on these? Sorry, it's on the, it's in the, maybe in board book, sorry.
The oversight each month when we're going through, you have, because that was going to be my question. This looks like a smaller one. I don't have the other one, so I think that's-
Good to hear that, you know, we're, you know-
So for those who don't have, yeah, sorry, for those who don't have it pulled up, it's the accounting assistant, the assistant superintendent, athletic director, athletic student activities clerk, business manager, the CFO, the custodial grounds and maintenance staff, the dean of, deans of teaching and learning. So these are just, yeah, the job titles. So department guards, the director of building and grounds, director of IT, director of special education, director of whole child services, director of transportation, the assistant to the superintendent, executive assistant to the superintendent, maintenance supervisor, IT support tech staff, media specialist, principal, secretary, superintendent, and teacher. So those are the approved positions in the, that can use the cards.
And just a small comment on the, on teacher. It's not every teacher. Those have been evaluated for need.
Okay.
So it's not like ever, you know, there's that many cards floating out there. It's pretty intentional.
Appreciate that.
Did I miss it, but was athletic director in there also?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other further discussion? So vote on this one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right. Our next order of business here is the appointment of our board liaison to the Madawan Public Education Foundation. Typically, we've had a, the foundation would like a board member represented at the, at their meetings. I'm sure Marika can talk to that a little bit. And that liaison attends when they can the monthly meetings and provides updates. I think right now, Mark, are you are representative?
Actually, Randy's been going, and then I passed it off to Sherry.
Sherry, so you, okay.
Were you involved, Marika? So I would still be starting as a board member on the Madawan Public Education Foundation, but I will no longer be president of the foundation, so I will still be attending their meetings. Yeah, so I'm happy to serve that, if that helps.
I don't see that as being a conflict at all, does anybody else? Yeah.
And that is within the bylaws of the foundation. So the foundation can have no more than 25% of their membership be from either the Board of Education or employed by the school district. And right now, out of 24, I would make the fourth person. So we have three from staff, and then I would make the fourth. So we're still within bylaws of the foundation that we have looked at in the last week or two.
So I'd move to appoint Marika as our board liaison for MPF for 2022.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Next is our appointment to the Van Buren County Association of School Boards. So we typically have a, we, there is a board member as a Madawan representative who sits on that association of school board. 2022, Bruce, you've done it in the past.
Yep.
Were you still this year, or no?
Well, we didn't meet much last year.
That's true.
As well as, well, one of the things they also do in the spring is the scholarship awarding. We have eight or nine scholarships that we award, but, yeah, the meetings this year were thinned out.
Okay.
That's one of the few things in the legislative dinner, which-
Didn't happen.
I wouldn't bet on that. Again, this year, if three things are going, so. Not a lot going on with it.
Is that something you'd be interested in continuing to do, or would you-
Sure.
Somebody else? All right, so I'd, I'd move to have Bruce continue as our member representative for the Van Buren County, uh, school board, associate school board. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. That takes us through the meat and potatoes of this part of the meeting. So I think we need to adjourn out of this organizational meeting, and then head into our, is there supposed to be public comment in this one, or no?
No, we've got it at the top of the next one.
Okay. All right. So any, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Bruce?
Support.
Second for Maureen. So all those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This meeting is adjourned at 6:55. That may be our fastest school board meeting. But now we could start another one. So I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular order of business for January. I'll walk through public participation rules. So we have two areas for public comment. One will be at the beginning of the meeting. We talked through this in our last meeting to work through, and we added this to the agenda. So we'll have a topic at the begin, or a section at the beginning of the meeting. We'll have a public comment for items that are on the agenda, so that way you can voice your opinion for things that are on the public, on the, on the agenda. They ask you to hold things that aren't on the agenda till the second part of public comment, which is at the end of our, at the end of our meeting. So two areas of public comment there. So I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:56, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy, do we have any other agenda items?
We do not.
All right, so now is our time for public comment on agenda items. If you've got that, please, nothing for Valerie yet. If you do, when you, when you do have, if you're waiting for the end, just fill out the yellow form over there on the table and hand that to Valerie, and she'll- All right. So we'll move into the consent agenda. In our consent agenda, you'll see the secretary's report, which has the board meeting minutes from last time, for the last couple, and our special meeting that we had last, our disciplinary meeting, as well as the financial information. So can I get a, if I could get a-
Yeah, I move to accept a consent agenda.
Second.
Second, my Mark. All right, any discussion? Pam, anything we need to know about financials, or anything there?
Nope, not on those reports. Those are like the regular monthly reports that you get.
Okay.
And that, just for month end, November. And then I'll have as an agenda item, the whole budget.
A whole bunch of other stuff.
Right.
All right. So we got a motion. Any other further discussion? All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That motion passes. So we will move on to our favorite part of the agenda. We get to hear what's going on in the school district, so Sporko, if you could help us understand whole child services.
Tim, before you get started, Jay Larn, our assistant superintendent, may have a cou- couple of comments by way of introduction. And we've been looking forward to this presentation, uh, as well, so we're excited to hear about the, what the updates in your department.
Yeah, so, uh, we, we'd like to welcome Kim Porco, our director of whole child services, uh, here tonight to, um, kind of give us a, a presentation on, uh, the initiatives around diversity, equity, inclusion, which are, you know, a component of our whole child services, you know, focus. Um, but she's also going to be covering a little bit about, you know, what is whole child services? And that's been a big focus, uh, at the state level, uh, with the Michigan Continuous Improvement Planning Process, is how are we providing education of the whole child? So the academic component, as well as kind of the social, emotional, and all the other, uh, components of supporting children in our district. And so, uh, that was a, a big, you know, organizational shift that we made, uh, over the summer, uh, so that we could really dedicate a lot of time and energy and, and intentional focus to that work. So I'm going to pass it off to Kim.
Thanks, Jay. Well, I'm really excited to be here and talk about this wonderful work that, um, we've had the opportunity to, to have, um, at our fingertips with this new position. Um, so, uh, just to piggyback on what Jay said, whole child education prioritizes the full scope of students developmental and academic needs, therein creating and advancing educational equity, um, and ensuring that our students meet their, their greatest potential. So it's been an honor to be a part of this. So there are different facets that make up whole child services. And, um, whole child services through these different areas, improve learning and health. And we do this by coordinating policy, pro- po- policy, practice, and processes within our district. That's a lot of P's, sorry about that there. Um, but the different parts that make up these, uh, initiatives are here listed in the purple. We have social, emotional, climate, health and wellness, family and community engagement, counseling, psychological, and social services. And I know throughout this presentation, there are lots of acronyms, so I'll do my best to explain them. And then, of course, if you have any questions, I'm here. But within these different areas and working through these different supports and practices, we support the whole child. And like, um, Jay mentioned, diversity, equity, inclusion, of course, makes up part of the social and emotional climate, because it's only when students feel belonging and we create inclusion and equity that we create a positive school environment. We want all our students to feel like they can be their authentic selves, that they're accepted and valued for who they are, and that's the, the climate we want to support. And then, of course, health and wellness has those different areas built within them. So physical activity, nutrition, looking at our employee wellness, and then the physical environment of our learning. So all of this comes together with lots of support and teaming and processes and practice review in order to support the whole child. And I'm going to go a little deeper in some, into some district initiatives. Now, there are lots of different building initiatives that aren't mentioned today, but, um, I, I wanted to look at this from a district perspective, just to give you a, a little more detail about what supports our whole child. So we have social, emotional, climate. Panorama is something new this year, and that is our SEL survey. And I'm going to talk a little bit more into depth with panorama on our next slide. Um, but SEL is social, emotional, learning, and Panorama helps us gauge how our students are feeling. Our staff are going to be, um, taking part in a panorama survey later this month. So I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. We also have new teacher training, five sessions, whole day sessions, where new teachers are learning about social, emotional learning. Um, they're learning about high impact strategies, culturally responsive, uh, teaching and learning. So we have those five sessions for our new teachers, which make up about 23 teachers in the district. Trails Pilot, now Trails is a social, emotional, learning curriculum. We have a handful of teachers that are piloting this program within each of our schools. K, um, K-12. Para-pro training. Uh, and since I've been in this district, it's been the first time that we've had para-pro training. And this is really a response to, um, feedback that we've gotten from para-professionals saying, I want more. And so we're, we're investing time, you know, funding and energy into giving that, because para-pros are such an important part of, of our work with students. Um, so they will have 10 hours of training this year. Some of that training, they just finished up a trauma training. Um, they've had social, emotional, learning training. And that has been offered by the mental health clinicians within our district, along with our very own Amy Smith Owens at the later elementary. So people really are, are folks within the district really coming together and teaming up to work together to meet the needs of our students. Then we have MTSS. I know Jay's been talking about MTSS, um, quite a bit, and, uh, PLCs, uh, professional learning committees, communities, excuse me. But MTSS really is an umbrella term that really just means we're going to meet the needs of our students academically, behaviorally, and socially, emotionally. So rather than waiting for a student to fail or a student to struggle, we're really creating and supporting systems that are responsive, uh, responsive to student needs. So we have these professional learning committee, communities, gosh, I, I seem to want to change the name, but that come together to look at data, review processes, or review, um, assessments, review, uh, standards, and, 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 and work together to respond to students' needs. Um, so, you know, the whole, that really encompasses the, the work of whole child, is being responsive. And then we have heroes training, and I'm going to have a link a little bit later, because some of these fall into more than one category. But our heroes training is, uh, Heroes Bystander Training, which is through Western Michigan University. And this training, actually, I'll wait and, and talk more about it when I get to the link, but it's really teaching our students how to be, um, allies and to, um, respond if they, if they see someone, uh, being treated unfairly. Here's another acronym, CST. That stands for Child Study Teams. And each building has something called a Child Study Team, in which a group of folks get together and talk about ways in which to support students that may be struggling academically, behaviorally, emotionally, maybe with attendance. Um, we've reviewed that framework to make sure that we have it aligned, K-12, um, and ensure that we're, we're meeting the needs of, uh, the students developmentally. And then we have DEI Team Action Items, which of course, as I mentioned before, really fit nicely into creating a positive emotional climate, and I'm also going to talk in more depth about those later. So as promised, I have some data that I wanted to share with you from our Panorama Social, Emotional Learning Survey. This is some district-wide data. Panorama leaves it out so nicely for us. And you can see that we have some strengths, and then we have the definitions below that kind of explain the different areas, that panorama, uh, surveys. So we have strengths in, let me get to that, is, uh, self-management and social awareness. Now, self-management, if someone, if, if a student reports or a, a grade level reports high in self-management, that lets us know that they're 75% less likely to have failing grades. So essentially, this panorama data is used as a snapshot to say, okay, this is where, uh, we're, we've got some really great strengths, let's build on them. These are some areas of growth, which would be self-efficacy and emotional regulation. Now, you may see the asterisks where it says teacher completes the survey. And that just is, um, something, uh, you know, at the early elementary, the data shows that the, um, the survey is more, um, valid if a teacher fills out the survey rather than the student, which makes sense, right? Five, six-year-old, you know, answering these questions. So, um, so the EES is, the surveys are, uh, filled out by the teachers. Whereas at the LES, middle school and high school, they're filled out by the student. So the great thing about this snapshot is that our, our district student improvement team, oh, you know, I think we had it on Facebook not too long ago, made up of counselors, teachers, um, folks in transportation, people in food servers, all the people that wrap around our students to create this great supportive environment, working together, looking at this data, and talking about analyzing the data, and, and, um, gathering information in order to reflect and then create action items. So again, it's a snapshot, the percentage is much like you would, you know, 80% would be about a B. But, um, again, you know, uh, it's just an overview, a snapshot to look at and say, okay, this is where we're doing well, let's check out this area, and what are we doing in this area? Um, and how might we improve? So another part of, uh, whole child service is health and wellness. So reproductive health advisory committee, you will be, um, hearing from us later. Our teachers are meeting actually this month to review our reproductive health curriculum within the district, um, and ensure that it's well-aligned, that it meets the needs of our students. We're also looking at, uh, curriculum or resources that can help our students with cognitive impairments, because that group of students is, are some of our most vulnerable. So we want to make sure that we have an appropriate curriculum to meet their needs. So our teachers are meeting this month, and then we have a, a reproductive health committee. And then, you know, the outcome of that meeting will come to you. Uh, we also have, what you should be seeing any day now, is a new series called the Strengthening Community Series. And this is a first-time-ever virtual accessible learning opportunity for community members. And, um, it'll be coming out on Facebook soon, you should be receiving a mailer. We have three sessions this year. The first session is Ableism 101. Second session is teaching parents how to support students who are coping through this pandemic. And the third series is about nutrition and, uh, also talking about how nutrition has been impacted, or our students' eating habits and self, I, uh, so, the view of themselves have been impacted by the pandemic. Kind of aligning with some of the anxiety that's been coming out, um, with students dealing with the impact of the pandemic. But all very supportive means of the community working together with the school in order to meet the needs of our students. And then we have Supplies for Success. You know, Andrea Lippert does an amazing job of supporting our students who are, have unstable housing. Um, you know, she provides us with backpacks and clothing for our students in need. And I can't tell you what an amazing impact it is, because I hear from other districts that, you know, here are some other ways you can find clothes, or here are some other ways you can find coats. I don't have to ever spend time doing that, because Andrea has it all ready and laid out, organized for use. We had a kiddo that needed snow pants, he had snow pants the next day. So that program has really been vital for our district. Something special that I know not everyone has. And then Gatekeepers is really a program at the high school, but I wanted to put it on for, you know, as we talk about the district, because the, the Counseling, Social Worker, and Interventionist Group, which is made up of, you know, the acronyms there, are social workers. They all really talked about how much they wanted to see gatekeepers back at the high school. Gatekeepers is a, uh, a, a program that teaches the students, uh, how to be aware of suicide characteristics in their peers. Um, it's an anti-suicide educational opportunity. And with, you know, the, with the pandemic that we've been living through, with all the other just social media and all the ways in which our students are, are, you know, have, being pressured and, and just, geez, being a teenager, this, you know, right now is tough. Uh, Gatekeepers is there to help, to help support our students. And, um, so that, Griffin Place actually is the one that presents that for the high school, and they, they will be coming out hopefully in the next couple of months. So family and community engagement. I think everybody here is familiar with the Wildcat Walk-a-thon. Used to love, uh, walking around when I was dean, walking around with parents around the, the circle there, parking lot in the back of the new LES. And then, of course, we have the Strengthening Community Series that I've already mentioned. Of course, the Wildcat Connection. And then more so, um, recently is social media and just, you know, letting parents and families know what's going on in our district and celebrating all the wonderful things that are happening. And the last section, Counseling, Psychological, and Social Services. We've got a lot going on in this area, which is great. Um, some of these are maybe repetitive, such as Supplies for Success. We also have, um, our, like I mentioned, our CSI team is our Counseling, Social Work, and Intervention Team. It's a group of social workers that meet every month, and we talk about, you know, what the needs are, uh, programs that they want to explore. Um, we, we talk, this, this year, we were planning the rollout of Panorama and the Trails curriculum. But such a fantastic group of people who are passionate about kids. I'm just honored to be a part of, of this group, they really are, are just beautiful people. And then, of course, we have the mental health clinicians, um, from the ISD that have been a huge help with, um, some of the challenges we've had in this district lately and just the day-to-day mental health needs of our students. This is an opportunity where the students get, um, a permission slip, and if they turn in that information, they can see a mental health clinician on our premises. Um, again, our Trails Pilot, which is that social, emotional, learning curriculum that we're piloting right now. Uh, I'll talk a little bit more about DEI levels of engagement here in a minute. Our social work framework, our school's social work framework. At the elementary level, we, we, you know, a part of that process of whole child, uh, is, was our so, our school's social work framework. And what we've done is create a structure in which we have one social worker that really focuses on whole child services within that building, and then another social worker that really focuses on behavior response or intervention and helping with, um, regulation. So it's not, uh, you know, vastly different than what we had before, but creating this frame, framework really helps us identify what areas need to be bolstered or what supports might need to be put in place in order to better support, uh, the new structure. Then we have WildPacks. Um, of course, WildPacks, we've had for a long time, that is food that is given to some of our students on Thursdays for, to, um, have over the weekend. We have wonderful volunteers that come and, and put that food, um, in places for our students. McKinney-Vento is, um, our homeless act, and we have seen numbers increase during the pandemic. Um, we had some wonderful NHS students that helped us with getting the word out about what that may look like. When, when students or families sometimes hear homeless, they think you're out, you know, on the street. Um, but that's not the case, and instability with housing can look like being in a camper or staying on a couch at a friend's house. And there are supports that we can put in place when students and families find themselves in these situations. But we did have two NHS kiddos, uh, let me, I wanted to give you their names. Maddie Verba and Rachel Harmon created posters to go in the bathrooms to, um, further, uh... you know, spread the word about what supports are out there. They also created posters for areas in our community, so that families, if they don't get a chance to come into school, they can see it at, you know, different, different, um, stores and such in the community. We have the Newcomer Kit, which is brand-new this year, and that is an opportunity, uh, for students who are refugees in our district. So we have a, a backpack that, uh, is filled with some T-shirts that were donated by the boosters, Manawon Boosters at the high school. And then it comes with books that are in the child's home language. So, actually, I was just talking to our ELL consultant from the ISD today, Laura Cronk, and she was talking about how excited one of our students was when they got the backpack last, or, it's like a little, uh, one of those rope backpacks. Um, but, uh, how excited she was when she got it last Wednesday. And, um, she had gotten one of the books in English, but, and she had heard it was good, but she was really excited to have it in her home language and get going on it. So, uh, yeah, some of the ways in which we meet the needs of the whole child in the area of counseling and social services. And then, as promised, the different levels of engagement for DEI. So, of course, like I mentioned before, if we're going to meet, uh, and have a strong, positive, inclusive environment that supports, uh, you know, a climate in which helps all students succeed, we, you know, that's the work of our DEI team as well. Some of the, you know, we have these four different levels of engagement, staff, students, systems, and community. And you can see here the different ways in which we are, i- it's our different action items for those areas. Now, the mini lessons are provided by the DEI team during staff meetings. The middle schools really led this work lately. Um, they, they have been creating ways in which you can celebrate, you know, Indigenous Month, or Black History Month, or Hispanic Heritage Month. We did, Black History Month is next month, but, you know, we work on it ahead of time. But anyway, creating slideshows and then sharing that with the different buildings, so that they can adjust it for the developmental level of their building, and then share it with their teams. And then they've had additional PD opportunities, like attending the African-American Student Initiative. We've been working on diversification of literature. You know, this academic and behavioral data is reviewed for disproportionality within our DESIT, um, team, our District School Improvement Team. And then, of course, our first-ever Strengthening Community Series is, uh, talking and facilitating some learning about Ableism 101. And that is from Disability Network, that's who's presenting, of Southwest Michigan. So, some other ways in which, you may have seen this newsletter already, but this is kind of a nice way to see some of the work we've been doing in DEI. I think I mentioned last time I spoke that our team was going to a fall retreat at Fort Custer, but here are some pictures of some of the team building we were doing. And we have Anne Heineck, Sandy Glasser, Carrie Ingalls. Their team was really rocking it out. They did an extra, there you have Amanda Rounds, she was pretty excited. She's pointing at Carrie, because Carrie was amazing with balance, did some pretty cool stuff. And there's our entire team. Again, our levels of engagement. We usually have some opportunities for learning within the newsletter, and this just is supporting why we're focusing on diversification of literature. So our students can see, you know, different perspectives, so our students of color can see representation. And all of this diversification really helps our students become better at critical thinking, become more global learners in understanding, uh, different experiences, and, um, you know, helping their fellow neighbors. So, here's our learning opportunity here. And then the Switzer Sisters, I think I told you about this in the, in the summer. Picture of them handing out our DEI shirts. And then, we'll be talking about our HEROES Bystander Intervention Training. But I wanted to focus on this for a minute here. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to go to the Later Elementary, but we have a new visual representation called the World of Influence. And if you hadn't have enough, if you haven't been to see it, you gotta get out there and see it, it's really cool. So we have, um, we also have these frames here that are magnetic, and these frames can easily take posters in and out. And so with the different months that we've been highlighting and celebrating and learning deep, more deeply about different, um, heritages, you know, we've, we've had these posters within the, the frames to do so. So, there's also QR codes on there, so if students use their iPads, they can, you know, be connected to more information about those, those, um, those people. And this leads me to thanking Nate Gillespie for, and Liam Comrie, they designed these posters in an independent study at the high school, and then Charles River did some printing for us. So, I have Nate here today, and he, like I said, they did such a wonderful job, um, doing this work and designing it. I mean, when I saw these designs, I was like, this looks professional here. Um, uh, but Nate, do you have anything to add to that, about your experience with the posters, or?
Of course, um, well, when it comes to this kind of thing, you know, you learn a lot in school about the ways that people, uh, you know, in history, like, to be a piece of research, but something you don't really disagree is starting from their perspective, you know, uh, what they're going through in their own way during the time. And doing extensive research on these people really allows, you know, to be able to do that, uh, and to also maybe to understand what the people are going through, uh, and their experiences, and that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they were so professional, too. They'd come over, hi, Mrs. Porco, gave me the, the shared drive, they were just absolutely wonderful to work with. Uh, Liam and Nate came over to the Later El to just see what it would look like, so they knew what they were working towards. Uh, they checked in along the way, and it's really cool, the Later El students think it's super cool that, like, the cool high school students are making the posters and, and helping them learn about, um, diverse, uh, people of influence, uh, that we have represented on the walls. So, thank you, Nate. It was, it was truly invaluable to have this opportunity for our kids at the Later El. But here's an example of one of the posters they made. And this was shown during, um, Indigenous Month, or Native, uh, Native American Heritage Month. Here are some posters that we, um, have, we ordered for the science teachers at the high school to have some diverse representation in their classrooms as they're teaching different lessons. So, I just wanted to share that a little bit and show you, um, the visual representation at the Later El, and how awesome Nate was and Liam to do that work with us. And I also want to thank Matt Bovin, he was the one heading up the independent study. Next, actually, this week, we have a meeting to look at the high school and make some plans about what a visual representation, a diverse visual representation would look like there. So more to come. Okay. And next steps. So we do have some SEL curriculum decisions to make after our Trails SEL curriculum is piloted this year. Um, oopsies, let me get on this, so you. And, um, we also are doing some flag, a flagship training for, um, uh, capturing kids' hearts. So about, I think, four of us will be going over to the east side of the state and checking into, or, you know, going to training for that program and coming back and talking to teams about our learning. We also have an ELL, or English Language Learner After-School, uh, pilot program that will begin next month, where we have about five students that are English language learners, uh, that will stay after school two times a week, and work on some of their language development, in addition to doing some really fun social time, because that is really a great way for students to learn languages through that social game-playing, or, you know, doing some sports activities. Um, so that'll be starting in February. And then we have the HEROES Bystander Intervention Training, we'll be expanding on that program, which I mentioned before, is through Western. Uh, you know, it, it, it helps us notice what is happening, evaluate the situation, take responsibility to be the one to do something, obtain the education to know how to safely intervene and step up and make a difference. And this is something that we were starting out with our athletes, because oftentimes things are heard in unstructured areas, or talk is heard in unstructured areas, and we really want to arm our students with the knowledge to step up and say, hey, you know, that's not right, and have some really focused ways in which to intervene and, and be allies for other students. Um, but also just to learn more about, uh, inequities in that way, and why it's important to, you know, speak up. So, about ten, ten folks will be going through this training, and it's a train-the-trainer training, so we'll have ten folks right in district ready to do that work for us. Well, that, that is about it. If you have any questions, first though, I mean, before I stop, I want to say, um, that I'm just really extremely grateful to, to Randy and Jay for creating, prioritizing the needs of the students in this way and creating this position. And I really believe, strongly believe, through our continued growth, that Manawon can set the standard for what this is supposed to look like for the state. That's my goal. And I know we can get there, we have, you know, such supportive teams, such skilled teams, and I'm excited to see where we're going next. So thank you for your time.
Do board members have any questions? I, I've got one comment. I'll say that, um, anybody who has an opportunity to take that Ableism 101 course, we do it in the community, uh, do it. Uh, we did it with our leadership team at work. I went into it with a little bit of skepticism, and I came out of it completely changed. It wa, it was amazing the way they present that material. Uh, things that you think you're doing that are, uh, supporting folks with disabilities, you realize, you come out of that realizing that maybe you're not, um, advocating for them in the correct ways, or the ways that they would like you to advocate for them. So it was really eye-opening, and I encourage everyone to take an opportunity to, to go through that. Um, thank you to you for also for, you know, the work you did in, you know, the Later Elementary School. All those kids really appreciate it, it's an awesome job, so thank you very much. Anybody else have anything?
No, that's what I was gonna say, I think that wall looks wonderful, talk about a wonderful work. I, I don't see that in, um, big organizations, so I think you guys should be very proud of yourselves, so very good.
I was really impressed with his.
Very good, thank you.
He's a creative man. He's only honest, uh, but like, yeah, he was really, his design was awesome.
I'm sure you had a lot of work to do with it, too. So very good.
Kim, I'm just amazed the amount of work you've gotten done, knowing that this position was just created, what, two and a half years ago, three years ago, just?
Uh, just this year. The DEI position, no?
Yeah, yeah, and just, just pre-COVID, and then we had all that to deal with, too, but you've gotten an amazing amount of work done in two years, so.
Thank you very much.
It's good work. And they're doing a good job, but the students, the community, the staff, I'm bringing it up, because it's a, it's a whole group effort, you know, and we're sending it on all, next week. That's amazing, and for the little ones to see you guys doing this, and you probably don't realize what role models you are and what it means, you know, the more opportunities we have to get our students, the older ones doing things, the younger ones. You both grow and learn from us, and we're grateful, so thank so much for coming to the Level 8, please.
I remember seeing you as older kids when I was in elementary school, always wanting to do some stuff. Time comes for us all, right?
Yeah, really, yeah, that's really cool. That wall, I just remember seeing it when I walked in, and, because my daughter's in the Later El, so thank you for doing that. And then, I just had a question, Kim, about the Strengthening Community Series, like, are the other parts, like, it sounds like Ted's familiar with the Ableism 101, but those other two, like, very, I mean, I think that's a great thing to reach out to the community about the nutrition and teaching parent to support students, so is that something that, like, is it like a program that you've brought in from somewhere else that you're sharing virtually, or when, and that's happening soon, you said? I just wanted to reiterate that for the community that's listening, and for myself, because I want to know more about it. And then, what is the Trails Pilot? That was the only thing I missed, what I?
Standards, that is about coping skills and other social-emotional standards.
So it's things that teachers can do with the kids to teach them about those things? It's a curriculum, isn't that you're piloting? Got it? Cool. One last question for the HEROES thing, that, that, that looks like a great program. Is that just at the high school, or all levels, or?
Nate, I don't know if you're gonna be here at the end for my comments, so I wanted to thank you for your leadership in this project, and, and I'm gonna try to track down Liam as well, but just really appreciate and love it when students step up and lead in the district. And thank you for being here tonight, it's great to have students in the boardroom. And is this a guest with you this evening, right here, to your right? This is your mother here tonight? Hi, Mom, thanks for being here, and support, supporting your son, you got a nice young man right here.
Any other questions or comments about the presentation? Thank you, thanks. Sure you got finals and stuff to study for, so don't feel, you're not gonna, you're not gonna offend anybody if you gotta walk out of here, so don't worry about it. I'll give you your escape hatch. I think we've got, you know, next on our agenda is the school board report. I don't have a whole lot, but briefly after our last meeting where we selected Marika as our new trustee, Sherry and I just had a brief conversation as we were packing our stuff up about lessons learned during that discussion. And maybe you won't be, I failed getting out there, everybody talking about this before the meeting, so I'm surprising a little bit with it. But if you had anything that came up from any of the four candidates that we interviewed that you thought was interesting, I'd like to carve out some time at, probably, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot now, but I'd like to carve out some time during this same spot in the agenda to talk through those things. And I'll give you a couple of mine, just as thought starters, right? So listening to Marika talk, you know, one of the things she talked about was, you know, that site planning piece. And then she also talked a little bit about MPEF. And I had recently, in that day, watched a video from a teacher talking about how administration and things had looked at, are always asking them what they need for their classroom, but sometimes they're so, they're the front line, and they're, so they're expected to do the things. And then also, take a step back and look at, take a step back and look at what they need. And they don't know that they need it, because they have created workarounds to do their daily job that they don't even recognize it as a need anymore. So I had, you know, a thought for me was using our parent association or our MPEF to be observers in those classrooms. So no, they don't always have to be, we don't always have to use the frontline employees, you know, frontline team members, teachers, to have to identify their needs and teach. So if we could get the right people to see what, that's such an idea, right? That's how these are things that have to happen. And then, secondly, was a, I think, Sherry, I'll let you talk about a little bit, was the idea about the, you know, counselors and getting kids introduced to their counselors earlier.
Yeah, that really struck home. A number of things did we, I felt like I really learned from it and touched base with the community through those interviews, you know? And whenever we have somebody speaking, I feel that same way. But with the counselors, I was thinking, we have the most fabulous counselors and have had for quite some time in our district. And, I mean, we can't, we rely on them so much, we can't exist without them. But do our kids really know it? And starting at a really young age where they could see them more often, I don't know how the logistics would work. I mean, it sounds simple, and it's definitely not, but, because they have to feel comfortable, you know, as you know, to relate to them and to be able to share. And if we could get them out there more in a classroom, or walking down the hall, or in the cafeteria, or whatever, the problem is, they're very busy with, you know, so few counselors, so many students. But I think it's an opportunity, something that we could look at. And that mom was saying, you know, and for the parents, too. For them having it, maybe some functions where parents are having, you know, meetings, school-wide meetings, or whatever, just getting them out there. They're a valuable resource that needs to be brought forth, I think.
So I won't put everybody else on the spot, but that's kind of what I was thinking. I'd like us to, you know, next month, kind of talk through some of those things you may have gotten, gotten out of that meeting, and maybe Randy, you and Jay could just listen to that. And not saying they're all actionable, but at least it might give us some ideas. And I think that kind of rolls into what we want to talk about next, which is strategic planning. So, I mean, that's what I had for a school board report, but that was a good segue into the strategic planning discussion. Does anybody else have anything they want to talk about from a school board report perspective?
Well, I just would like to thank the committee that went through. I mean, it was quite a process with their application and filling the board seat, and the committee members that went through all the applications to select those we were gonna interview. And the extra time they put in for that helped me. Was that you, Ted, and Sherry and Vicky?
Yes, you know, it was really Sherry and Bruce did the heavy lifting, and then I sat in the room. So I appreciate, I appreciate that. Thank you. All right. So moving on to some more old business. Just an update, Randy, do you have an update on strategic planning?
I do, board. So we've kind of spitballed this on and off for the last few months, strategic planning, and the process. And actually, had some discussion on a consultant to bring in. So I have for the board tonight, kind of just kind of bringing that back to the surface here after holiday break. There's two items in your board packet. One is a draft agreement with Gary Ryder. Of course, Gary led the search, and this would be a consulting agreement for, to engage in a relationship with him to lead us through a strategic planning process. Times to be determined. So that's piece number one. And so, you know, I'm bringing this before the board. The board, you know, after I'm done talking here, can have conversation, whatever you guys wish to do. You can give me the authority to sign this document, you could table it. We probably have another month, you know, to talk about this before we want to start getting on his calendar, if this is the avenue the board would like to go. So that's the first piece. The second piece would be the timeline. So there's another document in there. And what I want you to look at is the right side of that document, like, the key areas of the process. The months on the left can be changed. So I'm not necessarily suggesting that we start this in the fall or in October. In talking with Gary, actually, this afternoon, he does say hi from Florida. It was eighty-two and sunny there, apparently. He was very quick to rub that in today. Yeah, right, right, right. Exactly. I just told him he just ruined the contract now with us, so good luck. But, so he and I kind of roughed out this timeline. These are the high-flying pieces to the process, okay? There's a lot more behind this that will be involved here, but we can adjust those months. The second thing before the board to maybe have some conversation on tonight, again, don't necessarily have to decide it in January, but by February, I'm gonna, I want to push the board to kind of start dialing this in, because one timeline would look like this. We'd basically start that process that's before you coming into the spring. So we'd split it kind of over summer. So Gary can do either one. He doesn't have a preference. He's done it both ways before, where you kind of do a lot of the meeting with staff and gathering information coming into the summer. Then you set up your community survey. That gets launched in the fall, and then you wrap this up coming into winter. Or, the other option, really, the second one, would be starting this in this coming fall. And then you'd run that, and it's about six or seven months, I think. So both of these options would have it being finished next year. One would just start this spring. One would wait till this upcoming fall, and we'd run it a little bit later into the winter. The nuts and bolts won't change. We just have a little bit of a gap on the summer to work through. Like I said, he's done it both ways. I pressed him for pros and cons. He said that was early up to the board. So I think kind of on timing and what the board was feeling might be a better fit for the district. So I don't think that what we choose on the timeline is gonna change the nuts and bolts of it and how we're gathering information. It's still gonna be very thorough. There's still gonna be a survey to the community, just kind of when all these pieces are taking place. So with that, I'll hit the pause button. Just maybe entertain any questions or feedback or comments.
Yeah, does it line up to your budget? Like, if you were to do it at a certain time, does it line up like plans for your budget, too? I'm trying to understand the timeline. I'd push for an earlier timeline. I'm a proponent of strategy meetings, of strategic planning. So I've been missing it a little bit this year. So the sooner the better, to me. But I'd also understand that there's budgeting things. As you do develop a strategic plan, you have to put money to some of these initiatives.
Most definitely.
So I was just curious of how you would see that.
Yeah, great, great question. So the question on the budget, how does it line up? And Pam's looking at me right now, and the wheels are turning, I can see them. So obviously, if we started that process shortly, like this year, that would open up some doors preliminarily for the budget planning that we're gonna come into. So Vicky, to your point, yes. I'd also kind of have the board talk away in the back of their mind. There's some general areas that we've been working through administratively already that probably will end up as targets. We've been dabbling in master site planning, we're wrapping up this current bond. There's a lot of diversity, equity, inclusion pieces moving. There's a lot of professional development happening. We sense a lot of these pieces will end up by the board's choice anyways. So a lot of that's been floating around in our minds from a budget standpoint, to your point, Vicky. So I guess unless Pam or Jay has something to add to that, I think regardless of when we start it, if it's not already kind of gently tagged in the budget already, it's definitely easily to put that in, even if we wait till the fall. I think that the skeleton of those ideas are kind of represented already in the budget, if that makes sense. There might be some fine tuning, but I don't think anybody will be surprised, I guess, is a better way to say it, that, oh, wow, we haven't been doing that? No, we kind of have already. Let's just dial that in. That's kind of what this process is for. Pam?
I don't think that it's gonna matter if you start, I mean, from a budget standpoint, if you start for next year's budget, if you start spring or fall, because you're not gonna be finished with that process anyway if you start it in the spring. For us to, you know, but I think like Randy said, that, you know, some of those things were already in the back of our minds for budget anyway, and probably would be worked in there. So if you pushed it off, you're still gonna be okay. I think, honestly, what is next year already, twenty-two, twenty-three? That would kind of be the creation year. And then twenty-three, twenty-four is when you can really get, you know, use the plan and put it in the budget. And start using your budget as you should with strategic planning. So I don't think it's gonna matter, those couple, three months, whatever.
I think our issue is that, I think we probably hit some of our low-hanging fruit that we want to do, that we know are easy, or things that we could do strategic planning-wise. If we started talking about it now, but I think if we, I think we'd be pushing really hard to get a bunch of it in before June for the next year's budget, only because I'd be hesitant, I really would hesitate to make decisions about what a whole strategic plan budgeting process would look like without the community involvement, and that all stuff needs to happen for us to make an educated decision. I think if we start earlier, I like the idea of starting earlier. I think that's, I think that's good. What I'd like to see from you, Randy, is with this, you know, next month's meeting, maybe two different versions of this that have the real months in them, maybe, Gary could flush out maybe what would happen in those months. Because if we do it this other way, we start earlier, I think we're gonna have a few extra months where we could really do some deeper work, right? But with that, by asking Gary for help with that, I think we need to move forward with the agreement. For me, I am ultra-comfortable with Gary. I mean, Gary has worked with the board a lot, board governance. I respect his opinion. I think he comes from a, I think he comes from a place where, you know, working with outside consultants in the past for other things, right? He comes from a place of enrichment of the place he's working for, not necessarily for himself, right? So it really comes across as him being very genuine and wanting to help our district. And I think we've built a good relationship with Gary over the years to where we can have safe conversations with Gary. I trust him. And I, for me, I would be really comfortable with Gary leading our strategic planning initiative. I'd like to hear from others, though.
I wholeheartedly agree with you, Ted. I think he's been great to work with. He's been honest. He's been very punctual. He's met the deadlines we've asked him to meet on everything that he's done. And I think there's a lot of confidence and trust in having him kind of lead the way on this also. One small question I had as far as with Gary, my last conversation with him, he kind of planned on spending his winters in Florida, summers in Michigan. Is that gonna make a difference on our contract? Will we be paying airfare for him if he's running back up here in the winter versus driving over in the summer?
Good question. We actually did talk about that briefly, not today. We would try to work this around, of course, depending on what timeline here the board chose. If they chose to start now, he is in Florida, there might be some airfare. We tried to limit that, and he tried to combine that with some work that's also getting, that he's involved in locally with other districts. So there might be a way to share that cost a bit. While I've got my mic on, I would say regarding the service agreement that's before you, it's also posted online publicly for the community to see. This is, excuse me, this is a very fair, you know, when you look at the cost here, this is a very fair, marketable cost. Probably a little lower than when we cost this out, it would have been a year ago. We were also looking at MASB, you might recall. There were probably a thousand and some change higher. Most agreements require two installments. You typically have some not-to-exceed language on other expenses. So from an agreement standpoint, this is pretty, this is pretty standard. And probably, he's probably cutting us a little bit of a deal, too, right? Because he's done some other work here and wants to come back. He's looking forward to it. So, does that help, Mark, on your question? Okay. We certainly would try to keep costs at a minimum, yes, though, to get kind of down to that. We'd want to limit and try to work around his schedule when he's local.
So I'd like to move that we enter into an agreement with, I don't know, it's Gary? Gary Ryder.
Support.
Any other discussion on that? I think by doing this, it allows us to, allows Randy to really engage with Gary, show that we're serious about it. He can help maybe develop these two different versions, keeping in mind cost things and those types of things that he can present to us next month and give us something more concrete to vote on or to discuss, so we know what we're getting into month by month. So, any other discussion on this? All those in favor of contracting with Gary Ryder for helping us with strategic planning? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes? So now we'll get on to new business, and our first one is our budget revision. So Pam, I'd ask you to help us walk through this a little bit.
All right, just what you've been waiting for, right? So you have four documents to have reviewed or review that we're gonna kind of go through. I'd like to look first at just the summary sheet that you have, because that just kind of lays out the big picture of where we're at with the budget revision. And before I get going too far into things, I do want to say that I still feel like this is a pretty high-level version. We call that, like, the preliminary budget that we do in June for the next year is high-level, because there's so many unknowns quite often. We're just kind of throwing our best guesses in and whatever we know as far as, you know, revenues and any expenses. But this is just crazy how these budgets are rolling with all the S R funds. We've never had money like this to have to work with. It's a good thing, but it's taking, it's a lot of management to it, a lot, because, first of all, the accessibility of the funds. We don't even have access to all the funds yet. We have an application in for S R three that's not even approved yet. And so, and the timeline of using the money goes out for two to three years. So we're not going to be using it all this year. It's all in the budget right now. So I feel like it's somewhat still of a really skewed numbers. And so, like, last year, we had some of that to work with, but it's even more this year. It was kind of getting right down to the final amendment when I finally was like, okay, now we're using this money for this, this money for this. And then this year with S R three, we have to actually get it approved. There wasn't applications for the other money and waiting on the state for approval of the uses of it. So it's just a constantly moving target. So I just wanted to kind of preface our numbers with that. So if you're looking at something and saying, you know, we approved a $568,000 deficit to start, and now we're at like 1.1 million, what the heck? It's not, it's just still moving, and we don't, I think basically what's gonna happen is you're gonna have some of the expenses that we've had covered by these grants. And you also can't, grant rules, you can't, you have to have your revenues match your expenses. So like last, at the end of last year, we, I had some revenue in there. We didn't end up using it for some expenses, so you take that revenue out, you can't even count it for that year. So now it's gonna carry over to this year. So there's just a lot of that kind of movement going on with these funds. And it's just kind of a day-by-day thing. So we still wanted to do a revision at this point in time. We did one last year at this point. We did one last year at this point, just to get us a little closer. And one of the biggest things to look at really is your state revenue, because that's the per pupil, you know, that's the largest part of our money that we get. It's the per pupil amount and the student count. So, I'll kind of start with that. And if we look at your, we ended up overall then with, like, right now, I'm saying $2.7 million in increase in revenue from what we projected. But if you look at the sections between local athletics, state, federal, and ISD revenue, you can see that 2.4 of that is the state revenue increase. And that is because of the per pupil foundation grant increase and our enrollment increase from what we projected. So, when we, and in the narrative, I don't know if you had a chance to read through that, but that just kind of explains all of that. As far as, one of the big things was when we approved the preliminary budget in, at the end of June, we projected 8311, which was a $200 increase. This is $8,311 per student. That was a $200 increase from where we were last year. And that was at the end of June or in June last year, there was a lot of, you know, discussion by the state. They've tried to get those numbers out to us so we all know what we're going to be getting, where that was going to be. And that was kind of our best guess at that point. And we also try to be a little bit conservative. You don't want to like overshoot things. It's better to kind of sneak up on it. And if you get more, you get more, and that's good. But the, literally, I think it was about a day after we approved the budget, they came out and said that the per pupil funding was going to be $8,700 per pupil. So, that was a big difference from what we had projected. And quite frankly, pretty unprecedented. I'd never seen anything like that before, that much of a bigger increase than what they were kind of saying. I think that the state has used some of their S R money, you know, to help out with that. So, anyway, they ended up approving $8,700 per student for this year. And that was $389 more per student than what we had projected. So, that's a large chunk of that. On the student count side, I have a couple charts in on the narrative of what our projected membership count was. And if you recall that in general, the membership count, they go on a membership blend and they're going to count 90% of fall count and 10% of the prior spring. So, the year before with COVID, they actually kind of did a super blend thing and they flip flopped it. So, more of it was based on the prior year than last year itself because counts were down so much. So, that helped us. But they went back to the traditional way of doing the membership blend and funding this year to the 9010. So, it didn't, you know, we basically didn't show that much of an increase. We had, we had some, if you look at the projected fall count, we said 3588, 3,588. And actual fall count was 3,701. Now, if you recall this as well, we started shared services this year. So, 120, I had in here 124.67 students are shared services students, but it's 122.8, not much of a difference. So, anyway, of that fall count, 122.8 are shared services students. So, that kind of puts us right about where we projected anyway, just under, just under 3,600. It was below the 3588. So, but still not bad. I mean, if we, our blended count then, we had said was going to be 3577. And we're at 3679. So, it's still 102 students more than what we'd projected in June. So, that's not too bad. So, between the two of those things, that really produced that about $2 million more in state aid just based on those two factors. The rest of state aid is made up of some categoricals. And I always try to budget pretty conservatively with categoricals because those quite often float from year to year, what they're going to offer and allow for funding. So, I kind of, on the preliminary budget in the summary, take those out. And then once we kind of know what they are, add them back in. So, there was a couple of those that got added back in, so that was a good thing. On your variances sheet, you can kind of see the breakdown in the state section on the categoricals. MIPSers funding was a bit higher. I do want to comment on the MIPSers funding part of it. It looks like a lot extra, $860,000. But included in the MIPSers funding is that unfunded liability that is, we get as revenue and we have to pay it right back out. So, they base that on prior year wages. And so, you never really know for sure what that's going to be. I always put it in as what it was. And then we ended up having it be higher this year. So, that had to get added in as revenue. That's not all of that 860, but it's a good portion of it. Special ed funding increased from what was projected. At risk is down a little bit. And then that unrealized S R two money is, that is where we had to take out, we had to take out what we didn't use and then add it back in. So, that's an adjustment for that. So, overall on state funding, 2.4 million. That shouldn't change a whole lot with the exception of the S R two, depends on what we use of that this year. And then there's a state portion of S R three that we're still supposed to be getting. And so, whatever we use of that will stay in as revenue, but otherwise you have to take it out and move it to the next year. So, if that's making any sense at all. We could back up to, on the variance page, back up to the local variances. The bigger part of the local revenue is property taxes. We did have an uptick in property tax revenue, which is always good. Now, the only thing to, that you should know about that is that plays with the state aid. So, the more you get in your property taxes, it's just equaling out, like they'll take it out of the state aid. So, your total funding is that $8,700 per student. It's a combination of using the local tax dollars and what they give you for, on the state aid side. So, it's not additional money. It's all part of it and it just kind of floats back and forth with however your property taxes are adjusted. But it's still revenue coming in our door in that area, so that's how we show it. A couple of the other things in the local revenue is increasing is just, we had scaled back a lot of the, like, the school activity income. And when I say income, that's more or less just kind of transfers from other areas in the district due to student activities. And so, we had scaled that back with COVID because nobody was doing anything. So, I still wasn't sure how much activity was going to be this year, but it looks like we're kind of resuming normal activities, so some of that comes back in. We've had some additional rent income from contracts with the building here. And athletics is seeing a more normal year for revenue because of, you know, people are going to things and we can do that. So, and tournaments and so on, so, and the pay to play fees. If we skip the state then and go down to federal, we had grant carryover from last year that was unused funds that enter into this year's budget. And then ISD, the special ed funding was down a little bit. And then our shared, what I did with the shared services revenue, when I put that in last year, I put in kind of a net revenue figure. But now that we've got those actual expenses going in the budget and we know the revenue is coming from our student count, I separated them basically into revenue and expense. So, took out that 100 plug that I had put in just to see what it was going to be like. So, I think our actual income, and I will at some point, once we get a little further along, those costs are pretty well set. Now, I was just going to kind of do a little separate budget for you so you could see the effect of our little shared services program. So, you can see that we do have net revenue from it, which is a good thing. And I think it's probably more than 100,000 at this point. I think it's more like 200,000, so. Anyway, that's kind of where we ended up with the revenue differences. So, you can see that all adds up to the almost $2.7 million in additional revenue from what we'd projected at this point. I want you to keep in mind that this is not final by any means. Any questions on the revenue piece of it? I'll just keep rolling on to the expense then.
Probably has nothing to do with this. And it's probably, you know, we've had, we've done a good job of budgeting our money. And I know when we, you mentioned pay to play and I don't mean to surprise you with this because it just popped in my head. I'm just curious what it would do to us if, you know, what is the revenue from that? And is, are we at a place where we could look at reducing or eliminating that? I'm just asking that question.
That's a good question. I definitely want to do some more analysis on it. Off the top of my head, and I always hesitate to throw numbers off the top of my head, but it's probably around 80,000-ish for a year, like a normal year in revenue.
Okay.
But you still have a deficit to the general fund for athletic programs. So, in other words, all, if you add up all the revenue that you're taking in with athletics, admissions and pay to play fees, I'm thinking, and then, you know, versus the expenses that you have for it, you're still probably a few hundred thousand.
Well, yeah, I would guess that. I mean, you know, to host athletics isn't free.
Right.
But I've been just wondering if we're, if we can or ever get to a spot where...
Right. Well, and it would just be a matter of looking at your whole budget and if you can do without that revenue and still, you know, have a decent looking overall budget, because it is part of general fund. So, it would just be the, part of the picture of your general fund budget. You know, that's always something that can be looked at.
And the only reason I'm asking is just based on the inclusivity piece of it. I know that we don't force it on folks that can't pay for it.
Right.
But I still think that having it there forces, you know, might make somebody avoid it just because they don't want to have the conversation.
Right.
Just curious.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's always something that can be checked into for sure.
I'd suggest we'll do some digging on that and have a, have some feedback at the February meeting. I think we could have that ready for sure.
I apologize. I didn't mean to surprise you with that. It just popped into my head when I saw the variant thing.
Keep us busy. That's okay. It's probably time to review that.
Right.
And get some numbers to it.
Yeah, it's just another, you know, it's another one of those things that when we are, when you are approving a budget, you look at all the items that go into this and what's prior, you know, prioritize what you think is important and what you want to spend the money on. So, it's definitely a piece. So, okay. No, I got to finish with some expenses. I know there's a football game tonight, so I'll try to hurry up a little bit. No. Nope. Wait, there's more.
I will say anytime there's expenses involved, it's an uncomfortable pause. It doesn't matter if it's at home or work or here.
Right. Yep, no problem. I was just kind of waiting to see if there was any other comment on the revenues. So, moving on to the expenses, and this is, as I was saying, is still the moving target with everything. Of course, we have a handle on, we had the teacher contract settled before the preliminary budget. So, that was all accounted for. However, you know, there have been, still been staffing changes. There was a lot of staffing changes this summer. So, while you had a roster of staff, that's changed with wage changes, you know, and benefit changes come with those. So, that's all adjusted. And the thing that we, one of the things that we didn't have was, at the time of the preliminary, was some of the other staff wage and benefit adjustments. There's been, not, I wouldn't say a lot, but there's been, especially in the support staff area, just a lot of changes. There were still some position type changes that Jay and I worked on, trying to further define jobs and get fair pay scales and just really kind of digging into, you know, who's doing what in this district and making sure jobs are appropriate. Because I don't think that had been necessarily done for a while. So, you know, as you kind of look at those things, things become apparent and you want to reflect actually what people are doing and make it a fair job. So, some of those are changes that have occurred when you look down the list of expense variances. In a lot of the areas, that was some of the things that went on. One thing I could point out too, if you see like under school administration, there's a bigger jump. And then under instructional support, there's a, like a $324,000 deduct. I'm still going through our budget and adjusting codes, like the state, there's state accounting codes that we have to use for different functions, different areas in the, and you can see that on how I divide out on your summary page. There's codes there and that's how they're actually divided out with the state under instruction and support services. And so, I'm still evaluating a lot of our accounts for making sure that they're coded the right way. And so, I have moved, like I did last year, I moved, like, say for instance, coach wages from, they were coded under high school instruction. I moved it under athletics. So, there's some of that movement going on still, you know, as I'm running across these things. So, that was a direct, that's actually a direct reflection of that under the instructional support and then school administration and adjustment there. So, otherwise, you can kind of see some of the descriptions that I've put in there. There are a lot are similar among the functions as to why there's increases or decreases. In general, like in operations, we've had some increases, some replacement in equipment and facilities repairs. Brian Cornish, our director of facilities, is doing a great job going through and kind of evaluating, you know, just, he's done an analysis on things around here. And I've let him do some of the things that are most important, but I said we can't do them all in one year. You know, we've got to portion these things out. So, and he's putting together a plan and, but there have been some in this year that he's definitely wanted to get taken care of because they're a little more emergent than others. So, there's some increased costs there. Athletics, again, we had some increases just because we're returning to normal activities. And same under the facilities and construction improvements. We had the, like, the tennis courts there. And then, and then I've listed the unassigned S R expenses is where I'm saying that all of that expense is in there, but it's not going to end up being there. And we're going to actually assign it to some of the general fund expenses that we've, that we've had. So, that's kind of where we're at. I hope that all kind of makes some sense. It's like a whirlwind sometimes in a, trying to encapsulate it for you in a overview. But any, any questions on the expense side or overall budget revision?
I don't have any. Is anybody else?
And I think we'll, I mean, we'll have to do a final, final. In June, we do a final amended budget for the year. But we'll probably do at least one more, I think, between now and then. So, we can do another stepping stone and get closer to the end.
I don't see a motion in our packet. Is there one that needs to be made to approve the budget revision?
Typically, we do request that the board just affirm the revision with a voice vote.
Okay.
Yes.
So, I'd like to make that motion then to affirm the budget revision that Pam has presented.
Support.
Any further discussion? All right. All those favors, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That motion passes?
Thank you.
I don't know why I turned that off. Now, we're at a place for public comment, so. So, we've got a couple? There's one, another one behind you too. So, we'll start with... Pardon? Yeah. So, yeah, thank you. So, as a reminder, we like to limit public comment to about four minutes per. I'll give you, I'll give you the, you have a, I'll get a timer going. So, if you've got a, when I, I'll just raise my hand when you got like 30 seconds left or a minute. I'll give a minute. That way, I don't have to interrupt you when you're talking, just see me raise your hand, my hand. So, we'll start with Megan Rogers. Sure, that's fine. I just have, oh, yeah, could use a microphone too. That way, people, people at home, people virtually can hear you as well.
I'm here to address the people in the community as well as people who work, even though they don't seem to listen. And so, I'm here as a voice for our children today. That being said, my daughter had a kidney transplant in 2010 and will be immunocompromised for the rest of her life. Tested positive for COVID. She took ivermectin and improved each day and was 100% after a week. There are courageous doctors out there at AmericasFrontlineDoctors.org and other places online where you can get a telehealth appointment and they'll send you ivermectin. As of December 2020, the number of patients who have received the vaccine is 11,000. As of December twelfth, two thousand twenty one, ivermectin is supported by a hundred and thirteen studies with two thousand six hundred and thirty eight patients cured of COVID. COVID is a one percent death rate, one percent. And if you can and if you can and if you can get ivermectin, you can be cured of it. It is a forty year old approved medication. When your gut tells you something isn't right, listen to it, investigate it and research it. It's not right that the whole world shuts down for years, yes, years, over a virus with a ninety nine percent survival rate. Look into what's really going on, be open minded and follow the money. Ninety nine percent of the time, it will lead you to the truth. Duck, duck, go is better than Google. So let's look at what doesn't make sense. First of all, the vaccine itself. For a one percent death rate? Suspicious. Did you know pharmaceutical companies aren't liable for injuries due to any vaccine? That's suspicious. Government has granted them a blanket immunity, so you can't sue them for anything that happens to you or your child because of a vaccine. And once the vaccine gets approved for children, that's when the immunity shield begins. Isn't that weird? Did you know COVID has a patent and anything natural cannot be patented? So COVID is manmade? That's suspicious. Did you know Moderna is now saying a fourth shot is needed? And in Australia, they're saying six shots? Now they're saying up to date instead of fully vaccinated? Because it's looking like we will never be fully vaccinated at this rate. Just yesterday, NBC reported boosters every four to six months. Did you know VAERS, the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, says twenty thousand people have died within a week of getting the vaccine? And there are now over one million vaccine injuries? But the media isn't scare reporting this number every day and night like the COVID numbers? Here are a few facts you won't hear on your regular nightly news. Dr. Fauci is the highest paid government employee ever. The COVID grant that the schools get goes until June of two thousand twenty three and has strings attached. Research it. The the Public Interest Legal Foundation, PILF, found almost twenty six thousand dead people voted in Michigan in two thousand twenty. Everyone has a straw man whose name is exactly like yours, except it is spelled in all capital letters and registered with the government. That's a great one to research. Do you know Project Veritas? Do you know the Southampton siblings? Angela Merkel's father? The difference between the US flag with the gold fringes and the ones without? Where are the eighty eight hundred thousand missing children going every year? Remember masks? Masks, don't mask, mask, two masks, three masks or more? Remember bleaching our mails and groceries, disinfecting? Small businesses closing but big ones not having to? What happened to all that? What about the recent school violence and threats? If you don't see the line between that and forcing kids to wear face diapers all day, then it's because you don't want to see it. Something evil is going on and people with their eyes closed need to wake up and decide what side their souls are on.
Hello. My name is Megan Rogers. I'll just introduce myself. I am a family services caseworker and I work for the federal government. The statements that I am going to share are my are solely and completely my personal opinion and not that of the government entity that in which I am employed. First of all, I want to say, March two thousand twenty, masks were told that they were not, we were told that masks were not necessary. Then we were told masks were necessary to protect ourselves. Then we were told that apparently masks were not protecting ourselves, so we needed to wear them. Narrative shift, we needed to wear them so that we could protect others. Since then, the CDC, whose recommendations you are mandating on our children, they cannot seem to decide what the next route should be because they have still failed to get it right. Aside from the obvious violations to our constitutional rights, mandating masks seems to be merely being done because something is better than nothing. As parents, we have the right to make the choices for our children. If you want your child to wear a mask, let them wear a mask. If you don't, we have the right to not make our children wear masks. And I will leave out that.
Thank you.
Kind of nice to have a podium this time and not in the high school. So I'm Vicky Wannick. I know we have a new person on the board, so I just want to introduce myself. I have five kids in the school district. As I sat here, I was realizing that this little cheat sheet, this pink sheet that has everybody's little information on it, it would be nice to have like Pam, Jay and Valerie. And I'm sorry, I don't actually, I don't know why you guys are here and what your position is in the school district. So it just would be nice to have a little cheat sheet to say, oh, okay, that's who this person is and why they're here. I mean, you guys had very informative information and I appreciate that, but I don't know, I don't know anything more about them. So I just thought of that as I was sitting here. Okay, got my little things here. Okay. Recently, I've heard that another school district is doing COVID testing in the school. My question, and I know you guys don't answer questions, my question is, will or has or have you guys had that conversation of possible COVID testing in the school district, Madison School District? Can you give the current mask research for keeping kids in mask? Basically, how come you are not sticking with lifting the mandate as per your decision on August eleventh? You said, we're going to follow the rules of the rules of the most restrictive county, Kalamazoo County, has lifted their mandate. And let me remind you that we are in Van Buren County, which never had a mask mandate. So I I'm I'm curious to know why even on the agenda, like, nothing is being talked about the mask. So I I would have liked to have seen something from the board as to where we're at with it. I realize we get the correspondences, communications. Actually, on that too, on the website, for whatever reason, I had to dig through my emails to find dates and communications. For whatever reason, on the website, communications are not showing up regarding mask updates or health updates. I don't know if you guys know that or not, but on the website, it's not showing them on there. Communication. So I was a little annoyed that I had to go dig through all my email and I know a lot of people have emails that they have a hard time keeping up with. Let's see. I have to say, listening to the Well Child Services, listening and hearing that you're going to do paratrainning, I applaud because I have worked in the school district as a substitute teacher, a paraprofessional. And I've heard numerous times that these paraprofessionals want training and they're not getting it. So I think that's key in in hearing that. I appreciate that as a as a parent of kids and someone who has been in the school district. That's all I have. Thank you.
Randy's got a superintendent report, but I'll start with a little bit. I know we've we don't typically do back and forth. That we do answer, try to answer questions and some of our responses in later on in the meetings are, you know, through Randy's superintendent's report. But I'll say that the reason why you don't see the masks, or excuse me, I'll start with the first one. The first one was a COVID testing. We have talked about that. Randy's brought that to us a couple of times. It was in our last board meeting where he talked a little bit about tests to stay or stay test, is that what we call it? Is that what it's called? So that's working, we're working, trying to work through that. We had some tests ordered, but it didn't, it didn't work work out. Randy's still look, working down that. I'm sure he'll talk about that a little bit here in the super, maybe he'll talk about that a little bit in the superintendent's report. And then secondly, the mask thing, why is it not on the agenda? As a as a board in August, we did vote on that. But it is, at the end of the day, the running of the school district falls on the, it falls in the lap and on the shoulders of Mr. Jay Lerner, who's the assistant superintendent, and Randy Flainer, who's the superintendent. And they've made the call to extend that for the safety and safety of our students and to keep our students in school. That has been a mandate of the board for Randy. Our priority, our priority for him is to keep kids in school, learning five days a week. We know that that's the most optimum thing for our students is for them to be with their teachers and to be with their friends and whatever that takes to happen is what as a board we have asked to happen. So that's why you don't see it every day because Randy isn't, Randy and Jay are responsible for the day to day operations of the school district, not the school board. So Randy, I'll turn it over for you as a superintendent's report.
Thank you, board. First, I want to thank Kim Porco for her time and energy and prepping for tonight, but the massive amount of work that you and your team have been doing. Just really refreshing and exciting to watch this all unfold and just looking forward to more reports in the future on on the work that you and your team are doing. So thank you for that. And really a little shout out to Jay and really Pam. Pam alluded a little bit to just talking through staffing and restructuring and just trying to align a tighter of alignment with our leadership team on, you know, passions and skills and just kind of tightening that up and the adjustment to Ms. Porco's position is Jeff definitely reflective of just how we're prioritizing the needs in the district. So thanks for that. I know a lot of work behind those few slides. I appreciate it very much. I do have some other general updates for you. We're in the season now for calendar, next year's calendar, so we'll be working with the union. We do this annually, even though the contract's settled. We have a two year contract, but every year we look at the the school master academic calendar. And so you'll probably see some information on that. We'll probably have that at the February meeting. Mr. Lerner normally takes point on that, works with principals, meets with union leadership, don't anticipate any hiccups there. And so just kind of put that on the back burner and we'll we normally bring that to the board for some conversation and the board's blessing on that and and get that published and away we go. So that's coming up. We do, just as a reminder, have a series of half days for secondary. We're entering into finals. Here we go, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Had some good conversation, I think, with some staff and and parents and an occasional student as we come into testing, right? There's some anxiety here, especially with quarantining and kids out or flu or just you know, kind of normal winter illnesses as well. I just want to remind the board, we, the high school, middle school, more the high school will be working with students on this. If if we've got kids that are out, we're going to work with students to get these tests completed, these finals completed. So that kind of window of time, if you will, will be extended. Tried to kind of add a couple inquiries from folks and just going to put their minds at ease that yep, we're gonna, we're gonna work with everybody. We're gonna get the finals completed and 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 make sure those get done, even if they've got to be out of school for a while. So in case you get any questions on that, you can let the folks know or send them my way or to Mr. Eastman, typically at the high school on that. Couple, just a general, general safety, safety updates. Prior, prior to break, we'd spent a little bit of time circling the wagons on the emergency operations plan. We did complete a series of meetings. Good meetings, productive meetings, introductory meetings with our district safety team and area law enforcement, first responders, what I would call kind of our critical few. So these are the individuals that that sign off on this plan. So, you know, with me coming on board a year ago, just some name changes, nothing else super critical to the plans getting changed, but annually that core team of outside people convene, they review this plan and they sign off on it. So we're going to enter into that process here probably this month. That would include, you know, heads from state police, your Van Buren Sheriff's Department. We typically look at emergency management services, first responders, fire department, village leadership, just, you know, all of those players so they're aware. So just, just bringing that to the board so you're aware this is happening. This review is an annual piece. It's an important piece. And I'll probably have a little bit more to say after that's completed. And we're going to shoot to have that wrapped up and so I can report out at the February meeting. So health and safety pieces, had some public comment here tonight. I'll try to touch on on this. If not, you know, I'll follow up with, if there were questions out there and do my best to answer these. You know, we are, the the only change prior to Christmas here, so we're status quo with the exception of our local health department approved the state health department's recommendation that are, that endorsed the CDC's recommendation, so it's flowing down of adjusting family quarantine. That's the only piece that at this point our local health department has endorsed. So we normally follow the endorsements of the local health department. So this is where it gets a little confusing, where you've got three agencies often, you know, making recommendations and most of the time they line up, but some of the times they don't line up. And we're in this area where they're not lining up, so that kind of puts schools in a weird spot. But what we do know is that adjustment, and I reported this out to you, is from a ten to five day quarantine for family contacts that are asymptomatic. That can isolate. Yes, okay, thank you. See, I'm, I'm reviewing all this in my mind. However, literally at five thirty this afternoon, I hadn't got a chance to push any of this out to the board and I will summarize it. It's it's pretty brief. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services did issue a statement to local health departments basically endorsing the CDC's recommendation to move to a five day quarantine. There's, there's some specifics in here between vaccinated and unvaccinated. I need to read through that. I haven't really dived into that too deeply. Like I said, I just literally got that email after I sent an email to you guys earlier. Murphy's Law, you send something out and then it changes. So I'm going to digest that. I'll get that out to you all in the morning. But essentially, my understanding is that the the state now is coming alongside the CDC's current recommendations, in a nutshell. So give me a chance to digest that and and I'll process that and I'll get it out to the board. Let's see here. I'm looking through my notes here. So, yeah, one last thing on health and safety. We did put the January twenty eighth out there as a review date. I do want to let the board know, we're looking at data every day, almost hour by hour. Most of that's local in terms of positivity rates and quarantine rates, but we do have constant contact with our our local districts. I was on the phone with several superintendents today and our friends over at Portage just checking in to see how they're doing and and kind of where, you know, policies and procedures are heading. So just know we're reviewing that data daily. I will check on the website information. I had a couple of suggestions from board members about maybe reformatting the the website dashboard, ma- making it a little bit easier to read rather than in narrative form. I would agree, you know, that might be an easy change to make and just easier for the community to digest. I will, I will look into communications. We normally transfer those over, so on those letters. So do want to make it as easy for, as possible for people to get the email, but also go and find it again, so we can archive those. So other than that, I, you know, I'll keep the board updated as we move through January. Yes, thank you. So we, as I So we, as I had alluded to earlier in other emails to the board, we, we are working with our ISD on securing, making testing available onsite. We are not doing that at this time and that would be strictly under the approval of parents at any grade level. So, so know that, but I, yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been a journey secure, getting these ordered through the state. As you can imagine, every school district in the state's probably ordering them and it's a bit, it's a bit cumbersome right now, so that, that is in process. The other piece to that is, the state of Michigan offers a backpack testing kind of kit. We did inquire about that, I actually did get an email this afternoon on that, that they're processing through those requests. We're on the list and that would be something where if parents request that kit, we can send it home, kind of in the backpack, hence the backpack kit. And then the parents do their thing and test it home and send it back in or notify the school or kind of of what they're finding. So, so just convenience here on testing for those that would be interested in that. But we, we do not have any of those in district possession at all. So, and I would also add that that will get communicated out. I mean, if that becomes available to families, we'll, we'll have that out in the communication. But, you know, I do want to be clear, I did have some inquiries after the last meeting about, you know, the, the district mandating testing. I have no plans of doing that, I don't believe the boards had any conversation. I think it's more about making it available for parents if they're, they're interested. It's almost a convenience thing. There are some schools around that have received theirs. So this test and stay where if you're inside that quarantine kind of zone, or maybe you're just, a parent's just curious and wants to know, they can come to the school, it's convenient, they might be there anyways, have it done. And of, and of course, a negative test, students would stay then, so it's kind of trying to help cut down on, I don't want to, I don't know if unnecessary quarantining is appropriate, but obviously, right, we, we want kids in school. So, but I'll keep the board updated on that, but we don't, we've got nothing, nothing in, in play right now on that. So quite, entertaining questions from the board. That's all I had for, for the board this evening.
Any questions for Randy?
Absolutely. Apologize for that, let me get my mic on. So earlier I did, as I normally do, give a weekly update to the board. So we, we track that in seven-day kind of cycles, just to kind of stay in, in tune with other, you know, the, the state and county reporting. So just to give you some perspective, before Christmas, we, we were tracking between 30 to 40 positive cases every seven-day cycle. So when we look at our student population and staff population, because it's all together, it's roughly 4,200. You know, when you look at a positivity rate, you're talking .009 prior to Christmas. And as anticipated, and what was talked about is a post-holiday surge. If you look at the first, and thanks for having that up, that, that first seven-day cycle, which would be technically 12:31 to seven, to 1:07, January 7th, approximately 116 positive cases. So like we anticipated, an increase, as experts were saying, you know, that's roughly 2.5% positivity. So, you know, one of the things I, I do want to remind the board, like I stated before, is we're watching those numbers daily. So have received some question about, okay, what, at what point do things change or virtual? You know, candidly, this time as we're monitoring this, my biggest concern actually is with staff. Yeah, I think if we're going to get into a situation where we, we may have to look at, you know, pockets of virtual learning, it's going to be most likely around staff. I mean, so far, we're holding, we're holding our own. But this is kind of some of the things we're watching and talking about as area superintendents. Where, just where are those, you know, the, the quarantining happening with staff members? You know, our plan right now is to continue to monitor this data. I did hear out of Kalamazoo, you know, speculation, and thank you, Maureen, for having that up. Speculation, looking at this post-holiday surge, as they're calling it, maybe, you know, peaking in, you know, 10 to 14 days from now, which would, you know, kind of put you at that two quarantine cycles past New Year's Eve, that last family holiday gathering. So, you know, I, I think the next seven, seven to 10 days will be critical. And, you know, we're gonna keep the board, you know, updated as, as those numbers come in and, and as we work toward the 28th. Right, well, yeah, yeah, typically they're not, but, you know, we've got pockets of time when they're on mass, so that, that's been the challenge in lunch. Typically around lunch. Thanks, Maureen. Any, any other questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Hearing nothing else, if we, I, we could move to adjourn if somebody would like to do so.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support that. Any other discussion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.